Good evening, sir. Clerk Segrist, once you're situated, please recall the role.
Trustee Anthony is absent. Trustee Foster?
Hello.
Trustee Graham Hudek is absent as well. Let the record reflect Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens?
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman?
Present.
And Supervisor Williams.
Hello. Also, we have joining with us tonight the Canton Library Board and Canton Library Director. Eva, could you maybe introduce your team, or how would you like to see us?
We'd like to thank you for hosting us. So Amy Watts is our Board Chair. Jasmine Lee is our Vice Chair. Michelle Farrell is our Secretary Treasurer. And then we have Trustees Nancy Egenberger and Jane Pandit. And then also, absent is Trustee Don Turner.
Welcome. Okay. We also have some staff behind. Supporting team.
I have our Head of Circulation Services, Nancy Shipansky. Our Head of Information Services, Jessica Perry. Our Head of Business Services, Marion Nicholson. And our Head of Community Relations, Lori Golden.
All right. Greg, how about we turn it over to you? And we're going to go through surveys that have been done throughout the community that are associated with the library, as well as Leisure Services Division.
That's correct. So we did a -- real quick, before I do that, I don't want to forget, we also have some Leisure Services staff. We have Jeanette Ailo, our Business Coordinator, and John LaFever, our Deputy Director, joining us this evening. And Will Saint Amour with Cobalt Community Research, who did all of -- conducted all of the research for us, and is going to be giving our presentation for us tonight. So what we did, for the second time, we've partnered with the library. We certainly appreciate their partnership on the survey. So this is the second community survey we've done this with. We do this every five years, a statistically valid, random sampling survey of the residents to really get feedback on what it is -- what are their feelings on leisure services and library services for the community. And then what we use this for is we do this the prior year to doing our five-year master plan. So we do the community survey, then our five-year master plan, which kind of builds and uses this survey as kind of a launching point to really drive some of the decision-making for that master plan. So with that, I will turn it over to Will. He can give a little background about the survey itself and then jump into the process.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for letting me come out and participate in this process. So I'm Will Saint Amour. I'm the Executive Director of Cobalt. Cobalt is a 501(c)(3). We're a nonprofit that's based here in Michigan. We work across the United States with communities and other nonprofits. Our mission is to provide research and education so that local units of government can make better decisions based on high-quality data. There are several reasons to do research. It's something that this community is not a stranger to. One is being able to compare your results with state and national benchmarks to get some sense of context. Your scores will naturally go up and down, not based on what you're doing, but also based on broader things that are going on, politically, economically. And so this is a way of giving you that context of, you know, if your score goes up two points and national only goes up one point, that tells you that you're doing something above and beyond what's going on in that broader environment. Also, just continuing to touch base with the community to make sure that you understand the values and the priorities as folks move in and the community changes over time. Sometimes those changes aren't obvious, and doing this kind of statistical look helps you understand that a little bit more readily. Understanding community perception does help you more effectively do the outreach so that people understand the programs that you offer, and you can adapt those programs to better meet their needs, given the revenue constraints that you have. Supports difficult decisions. So if you do need to make choices between two things, having this kind of information is one piece to help you make some of those decisions that might be more challenging. And also, just the bottom line, building trust, continuing to have trust with your community, that you're being open, transparent, and that you do care about the information that they want to share with you. So methodology, pretty straightforward. It was a random sample of 1,500 residents. It was drawn from voter records. This is a true random sample. Random.org actually uses atmospheric noise as the tool to draw the random sample. It's based out of Trinity College in Dublin. The mailings were done in November 2019. Everyone had a unique survey ID number that would allow us to filter out any folks that replied more than once, and also helped us with the follow-up process. The identification of folks who responded is removed from the results themselves to make sure that that is anonymous and that the results are just given as data so that you can use that to make your decisions. We heard back from 525 residents in the random sample piece, and sorry, 325, and that gave us plus or minus 5 percent. One of the questions that often come up is for a community our size, is that a large enough response to give us a good feel for what's going on? And for a plus or minus 5 percent for a national survey, you need to have 384 responses to be able to get to that same range. So really, it's very solid from a data perspective. In addition to the 325 residents that were part of the random sample, this was opened up to other individuals who wanted to share their feedback, and there were 62 individuals that did decide to do that as well. And so their feedback is incorporated in the survey. They're not intermixed with the random sample, but as part of the results so that you can see in the cross-tab, this document that has all of these individual lines, how that particular cohort responded. In most cases, it's right in line with the rest of the respondents. So your total response for the survey, 387 residents took time to give you feedback, and if they were to be lined up outside the room, that would be a lot of folks. An important piece of the packet that you have is this cross-tab. This slide that I have up right now is designed to be unreadable, and we successfully do that. The reason that I put it up, though, is to give you a sense of how to read these, because you've got a number of these. And this is really where the most actionable findings in the survey can be found. Essentially, every question in the survey has its own column, and then every demographic group that we broke the results apart by have their own row. So it's like the maps where you can look from Lansing to Ann Arbor and see how many miles it is. You can do the same sort of thing to see how each one of these groups responded to an individual question. That way, you are able to preserve all of those voices, and they're not just washed out in an overall response. The other thing that we do is we add the shading. So the higher the score, it's in blue, lower scores are in pink, white is kind of the midpoint, so it goes from like a dark red through pink to white to a light blue to a dark blue. And if you're scanning down a column for a particular question, and you see that the whole column is pretty much blue or pretty much red, that tells you that regardless of demographic group, people feel pretty consistently about that particular question, regardless of what group they're from. And if you're seeing more checkering, like in this first example, that means that there are some differences for the individual demographic groups. And that's where you do want to do a little bit more discussion, a little bit more exploration. And also, as you're out in the community, as you're in the milk aisle chatting with someone who might have young children, you see from the results that they are interested in seeing more youth programs. And so instead of just generally asking, "How are things going?", you can be much more precise in that kind of conversation and drill into those particular kinds of precise questions to get that feedback that'll help you make more actionable decisions. So as I dive into the results, this is informal, so if you have questions, feel free to stop me. We do want to try to keep it moving along fairly well, so if it starts getting into greater depth, we might want to take that conversation and put it to the end to make sure that we have time. But are there any questions so far? The first section of the report is talking about some of the data for the township overall. One of them is looking at where people get most of the information about upcoming programs and events. And the number-one thing is the focus newsletter. You can see that tall bar right in the center. 62 percent get their information from there. Then we have the Discover brochure, that's number two, and word of mouth is number three. And these do vary by demographics. So again, looking at the cross-tabs later on when you're trying to look to see, how do I get the word out to a particular demographic cohort? This is a useful tool to be able to drill in and do that more accurately. We asked about the most critical issues facing Canton. And aging population was the number-one thing there in the middle, followed by environmental sustainability. Then we had a couple of things that were kind of clustered in the mid-range: mental health, knowing the neighbors, substance abuse, cultural awareness. I talked about the benchmarks earlier, and not every question in the survey were benchmarked, but this one is. And this is looking at the community events that are available to residents in the township compared to a number of different reference groups. So to read this, you look at the far left-hand side, and you can see that dark bluish-blackish bar, and that's Canton. The light green is for similarly sized communities in the state of Michigan. The dark green, state of Michigan overall. That orangish-brown is the Midwest overall. Light gray is the U.S. for similarly sized communities, and then the black is for the U.S. overall. So one of the takeaways from this particular chart is that you are outperforming the benchmarks consistently across the board when it comes to events. Now, the other thing is that not all of your scores are equal. So if you look at activities that interest you, for example, that one is a little bit lower than your other scores. While you're still outperforming the benchmark, you know, relative to your other scores, that's one that's a little bit weaker, but still very solid. So looking at some of those questions on a 10-point scale and adding in a few custom ones that were put in, you can see really all of your scores are in that mid-range of eight, on a one-to-eight range. There were a couple that were lower. Strong and vibrant arts community was a little bit softer. Activities that interest you. And then we had some custom questions that were added in over here on the right-hand side. As far as traditions for family and community, feeling of being welcome and belonging, and affordability of participation fees. And again, these are all very solid scores. We asked about potential skill-building programs, and there were a number of options that they could choose from. The big ones that came up: culinary and cooking programs, computer skills for adults over age 55, and home improvement. So those are things that you might want to dig into more deeply. I do want to point out that people had a lot of things to choose from, and so even the one, culinary arts, for example, the tallest line, is only 34 percent of the folks picked that particular option. But it is something that does have a lot of interest, so that's something you may want to look into a little bit more closely. Looking at those skill-building programs and just pulling out some of the cross-tab pieces to give you a sense of it, if we look at the age group in the home, we can see some interesting differences. So the culinary and cooking programs, for example, those are things that tend to interest people with younger and middle-aged people in the home, not so much with the older people in the home. STEM and STEAM programming for youth, that's something of more interest for people that have younger children. So those are just some of the examples of some of the variation that you're going to see when you're looking at these kind of questions inside the cross-tabs.
Absolutely. Please do, Nancy.
So I think it's interesting, when I look at the bright red, right? That's where we kind of hone in.
Yep.
And it talks about youth visual arts and dance programs. And those seem to be low numbers for the age of like 35 to 54. I feel like that age, they might have kids that would be young. And so I'm surprised they're not interested in those.
This was a forced choice. They weren't able to make an unlimited number of things, so they had to rate them. And so it doesn't mean that those are unimportant, it just means that the other areas had more importance to them.
Was this to add programs? Because it says potential programs, and perhaps we already have sufficient in that area? Because we do have a lot in that area.
Sure, absolutely. Yep.
Yeah, except that if you look back on the one before...
That was built...
It was preferred. You think the 4 percent on the one before is because there's just too many of them?
They're, yeah. They're the same charts, right?
It is the same data.
I mean, it's the same data.
It's the same data.
Put together in a different way.
Oh, yeah.
So you think that might be why?
So when the questions were asked, was it asked, "Is this something that the township should offer?", or is it something that we should have community-wide?
Good question.
Yep. These were community-wide. I was just looking to find the original question itself, which can be available to you.
I'm wondering, because we have a lot of dance studios in the township that offer that type of program. Yeah.
Right.
Home improvement. Well, I'll keep going along. But these are the kind of questions, though, that you do want to dive into a little bit more deeply. And the other thing is that there are limitations on the survey size, and so some of the questions are less, you know, "Is that particular thing?", and more, "These kind of things." So even though it might be culinary, well, what does culinary mean? I mean, could that be barbecuing? Yes, no, it depends on the person. So there is a little bit of room for interpretation. So again, using these as a cue to do some digger-deeping. Some digger. I'm just thinking in terms of culinary. Some people may think of culinary arts as being more of a gourmet kind of thing. Some folks might consider culinary arts to be something that would include barbecuing and more informal kind of things, kid food. Could be a lot of different things along those lines. But anyways, but it's the skill-building piece, and it just gives you a sense of which particular area to dive into more deeply. Social programs. We asked about potential social programs, and the things that came out the most were social activities for adults and community special events. Those were the big two. Again, not huge numbers. The plurality of folks really said that this isn't an area to dive into more deeply. So 36 percent said none of these. And again, diving in, looking at some of the detail, we can see some differences in the scores. So before and after school care programs, for example, are of greater interest to people with young children in the home. So that makes a lot of sense. Another question that we asked is for people to consider, what are the needs that they will have in the next five years, projecting forward a little bit? And the things that came out of that, number one, services for seniors. It is an aging community, and as we'll see in some of the other data, that is definitely one cohort that you'll need to be paying attention to as their needs evolve. Help using technology is the next area, followed by making connections with other people in the community. So one of the pieces of analyses that we included with this particular report were a number of data points on the community overall. So they weren't directly from the survey. These were taken from a wide variety of data suppliers. One is looking at your population overall, just to get a sense for what are the five-year trends. And you can see the area that I have circled. These are the two areas that will be growing the most as a percentage, which are the people that are age 65 to 74 and 75 to 84. So very substantial. But while I say that, I want to make sure that you don't lose track of the actual absolute numbers that are over here in the five-year projections for the actual counts of the population, that you do have large groups of all of these other age groups that will be needing your One of the things that we'd like to look at as well is an analysis of people that have moved into the township in the last five years compared to folks who have been here for, or sorry, three years, compared to those who have been in the township three years or longer. So those who have recently become a new resident are in green. The gray are for the folks that are existing residents. And you can see the people who are coming into the community tend to be quite a bit younger than the existing residents, even though your existing residents are an aging cohort. If we look at household income trends, you can see that really the bulk of your new residents coming in are in the $100,000 to $149,000 household income range. If we look at the average household member count, it's just under 2.5 percent, or 2.5 And then we also pulled in information from Mosaic. And what Mosaic is, is it's a segmentation tool. It's very standardized. It's used commonly in advertising and other kinds of analyses, and it gives you household-based segmentation. So it gives you insights into behaviors, attitudes, personas, values, those kind of things. And it's a lot deeper than just a demographic look at someone, because not everyone who's over age 65 are the same. Huge variations depending on what their interests are and their economic situation and their health and all of that. So Mosaic helps give you a better sense of that, so you can, again, communicate more effectively, use the kind of communication channels that these people use, and build programs and messages that best meet their needs. This is a bit hard to read for everyone, but again, it's using that same green and gray, and it's looking at which of the Mosaic segments are coming into the community that are the largest. And we see that the three biggest ones are fast-track couples, and I'll describe these in a moment, generational soup, and couples with clout.
I just want to know what you want to say. I'm very, I'm very, I'm very, I'm very serious about this. This is hysterical. I'm very, I'm very, I'm very, I'm very...
I'm a fan of digital dependence.
One of my favorites is the Aging of Aquarius. Yeah. So when we look at the existing residents, Aging of Aquarius is the number-one segment that you have, followed by generational soup again, and then American royalty. And the naming convention, my understanding is part of it is a group of staff that come up with things, but they also often involve their clients. They describe the segment, and then they have like a little competition to make it So the Mosaic trends, these are short descriptions for the largest three for new residents, so fast-track couples. So they're under the age of 35, married, work at good jobs, and own their own homes. About 2/3 have kids. They have at least some college education, and they have some decent-paying jobs in sales, white-collar professions in technology. Generational soup, older couples, generally with the baby boomer generation. They have young adults or aging seniors in their home, so they have kind of an older, extended family living in the home. They're college-educated, and they hold a range of white-collar jobs, sales and professional jobs. And then couples with clouts. These are the wealthiest of the consumers under 40, and they generally contain dual-learners. They're well-educated. They're white-collar professions, again, and they tend to be very mobile. There is a lot more detail on these. Even if you go out on Google and type in "fast-track couples", you'll have just a huge amount of data that you can dive into, but I just wanted to give you a flavor for what they are. For the existing residents, we have the Aging of Aquarius, which is the vanguard of the baby boom generation, so they tend to be affluent, educated, and empty-nusters. More than 80 percent have no children at home, and they're kind of enjoying the kickback and relax stage of their lives. Generational soup, so it's a mix of affluent, older couples. We talked about that a little bit. Then American royalty, which is the most highly educated segment in the nation. So these are folks, they have high salaries, cultured, very interested in the arts. And so that's an important feature of Canton as well.
We can remove you. No, we can remove you from this whole proceeding if you can't keep a lid on it. We are much more serious.
Pro shop at the summit for sale?
If the library trustee's going to talk smack, could you turn the microphone on?
All right, moving along. So just getting to the bottom line, and I just want to summarize some of the things I've talked about and some of the data that I'll be diving into here in a few minutes. So when we look at the most important issues facing the township, aging population, environmental sustainability, those are the two things that came up most prominently. When we look at the different services that are used by the community, the library, the parks, the majority are users, so very few people are not users. So these are important functions. Your scores, again, you're outperforming state, regional, and national benchmarks. You're in a really strong place to be building from. When we look at some of the themes, exercise, nature, trails, you'll see trails coming through this a lot. The majority of folks are also willing to fund improvements, including trails, so that's an important thing. And then when we think about some of the potential future library services, notary and more services to seniors are the things that were noted the most from that perspective. So what I'll do now is I'll start going into a bit more depth on leisure services and then library services. Are there any questions before I dive in?
Is there any clear data that distinguishes desire for walking trails to be financed as opposed to programming? Is there a strong, I mean, there's clear wants on both sides, but is there an overwhelming between the two? This would be, this one should be put in front.
There are some slides where we look at willingness to fund and also how the percentage of folks who want that. And so you do see a relationship on a scatter plot that that's one of the things that people, they want and they're willing to pay for. There are some things that they want that they aren't as willing to pay for.
That's what I want to know.
When you say also environmental sustainability, I mean, did you just use those words or did you describe it more? Because that's a buzzword that people use in different ways. What did you, how did you define it?
We'll go into that a little bit more as we get more deeply into this. Other questions?
Can I ask a question about the sample? What was the reason that you used the voter file? And was it just registered voters that you used? Because I'm wondering about the non-registered voters that live in Canton, more specifically some of our immigrant population.
So it was registered voters, and the reason that we use that, there's a few options. So you could use registered voters, you could use a consumer list that you purchased that would be broader, or you could use the tax rolls or utility billings are also something that are often used. They all have their strengths and weaknesses. Utility bills are great, but it tends to skew against renters. Some renters pay the rent, but often it's, it might be the landlord, and that's a pass-through kind of thing. Same thing with property owners, you're losing that cohort of folks who rent. When you're looking at voters, then, compared to the consumer list, the consumer lists, they bring it from a lot of different sources, and it tends to not be the most accurate, especially if people, especially that same cohort that you're talking about, if they move out, the transitory. You tend to get a lower response rate because it's going to people who no longer live there anymore. So the voter is really, it works well because you do get, for folks who want to be more deeply involved in having a voice in their government, so you kind of get some skewing of folks that want to be more involved. And it tends to be more accurate, so you end up with a better response rate.
Just a note on that as well. We did try some of the other, in previous surveys, tried some of the other sources to get the data, and we had a lower response rate. And we also got a lot of complaints from people that were, you know, this is, Bob doesn't live here anymore. You don't even know who lives here. And we had a lot of those types of things that we didn't get this time. It was kind of surprising, the number of people that would call in with those complaints, but we didn't have that issue this time.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make a comment? Sorry. Then how, I guess, to what Summer was saying, how do you make sure that, knowing that these struggles lie ahead of you, that your data is representative of the population in Canton? For example, you know, I work at Ford Motor Company, and I have a lot of Indian-American families, right? They don't have, they're not registered voters, but they're here, but they are also residents. So how do you ensure, right? I understand it might be a struggle, right, to go outside of the registered voter scope, but, I mean, how do you truly tap into that?
Yeah, there's two ways of addressing that. One way is that you do make the survey available to anyone who's interested. So as long as they're plugged into kind of the outreach process, they were able to take the survey if they chose to, and 62 people did choose to do that who are outside of that sample. So that's one piece of it. The other piece is that survey research is really just one piece of a broader engagement effort. So while survey data is useful, it does have limits because it always has skews to it, even if it's randomly sampled. And so while surveys are one important piece for making decisions, it's really the conversations that you're having in the community, your professional experience, your gut, all of those things need to come together to make decisions. And you shouldn't rely on just survey data as your sole source of truth, essentially. This is just one way of reducing uncertainty.
Okay. I think what you're saying is it's a data point, and this is my first time at one of these meetings, so I guess I would like to understand, you know, from the board, is, are your decisions based off of this data, or are there other conversations that are ongoing, right?
To the point he made, it's one data set.
It's just one?
It's one source of information. We all have residents calling us daily.
Sure.
Emails, phone calls. We get a lot of feedback, whether we like it or not. When I go out to dinner in Canton, people... When I go out to dinner in Canton, people ask me or tell me what I need to do better than what I'm doing yesterday. So I get a lot of feedback from a lot of different sources, and I can tell you, they represent the cross-section of Canton Township, at least that's my personal experience. I don't know if the other trustees want to comment or add to, but yeah.
I'll jump in there as well. So when we do, when I first started out tonight, I was talking about, this is our starting point, kind of our launching point for our master plan process, for our five-year master plan. So we'll do this this year, and next year we'll work on our master plan. As part of the master planning process, we'll use this data, but we also do multiple community input forums where we'll have opportunities for the, any member of the community to come in or provide us with feedback on programs, where they want things to go, those sorts of things. So then we'll use the survey data, the community input, staff data, and other information that we have to put together a master plan that then we'll bring to the board for final approval.
Right. So what's the outreach after that? I guess I'm not, I'm not clear on that. So you said that there's a master plan, but what's the outreach to the non-registered voters?
So that's, that's part of the community forums that we do. So we put that out like in the focus, which was, you know, one of our best-used pieces of information. We'll advertise in there and on our website and on our Facebook for open meetings for anybody who is interested in the community to do that, to come in and provide feedback for.
Sorry, I'm going to steal your microphone. And we boost those community forums as well, because we do have a lot of immigrant, non-registered voters who are not citizens who use the library. So we boost those through our social media channels and on our website also. And then for the libraries part, we have the same sort of cycle of feedback and listening. So we, the survey is kind of the launching point, and then we'll be updating the strategic plan for the library, and we will do either informal or formal focus groups. The librarians and the community relations staff will interact with patrons who are using the library. And I don't, I'm not as popular as Pat, but people sometimes stop me and ask me for, you know, questions and feedback. And then anything having to do with the library, the township trustees usually forward that on to me as well. So there's open communication about those sorts of communications and feedback, but the, we're not as formal, but we have the same sort of feedback cycle and communication and opinion gathering.
Yep.
And I will, I will say, people in Canton are not shy.
But you also have other data such as like police data. So like here where there's, this group of people said that mental health to them was 24%, we also know what we see with domestic violence and things like that, where these people might not have responded to. So that's brought into it also when you make decisions.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted a better explanation of that for me, I mean, just to be more mindful of that, but I do appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
That's a great question.
I would just add that I couldn't pick out the background of the respondents, the ethnicity. I see it's broken down, but if we could get a listing by percentage or num, real numbers from each of those categories, that would be helpful.
Yep, we have that available. Are there any other questions? So one of the questions in leisure services that we wanted to look at is the number of programs and events attended in the past 12 months, and you can see about 45% did not attend the programs or events in the last 12 months. But we do have a fair distribution of folks who have attended, you know, two to three is probably the plurality there, and then, you know, a number of folks that have attended quite a few more. When we look at the reasons of why they use the parks, the facilities, and the programs, the number-one thing really is physical fitness at 45%, followed by time outdoors. Number three is for the entertainment piece. Again, looking at some benchmarks to give some context, as we saw with the events, the facilities and programs are very favorable compared to the benchmarks. When we dive in and look at some of the custom questions on that one-to-10-point scale, we can see that the custom questions that were added in outside the benchmarking, safety, security, access for people with disabilities, mobility-challenged, and location convenience, those are also very solid scores as well. We asked them to rate different features for the summit on the park, and you can see most of those scores are in that eight-range again. A little bit of a softer score for locker rooms and classroom space, a little bit soft on swimming lessons and other programs, very solid scores for customer service, for the aquatic center overall, indoor walking track. This was an interesting question. We asked them, how, how close are they to the nearest park? And you can see that about 35% said that they cannot safely walk to their closest park. And this starts getting in with some of the trails and safe paths kind of conversation that starts to emerge in the data. We asked them how often they visit a park, and you can see only 19% said that they never visit a park, and that increases in frequency as you go further to the left-hand side, but you can see that the parks are very widely used by residents. We asked about improvements to the existing parks. The things that people wanted to see were permanent restrooms, safe-walking biking routes from the neighborhoods, water bottle filling and drinking fountains. Then we had a number of things that were kind of floating around that second tier. We have the shade structures, lighting, picnic areas, park shelters, and pavilions. When we're looking at these improvements, we then plotted them along with residents' willingness to fund the choices with something. So the options for the funding was nothing, $2, $5, or $10. So we took the $2, $5, and $10 and put it together to work out the horizontal axis. So essentially, you're seeing permanent restrooms are something that about, you know, 38% of the folks would like to see, and you've got about 47% willing to fund. Looking at the sports and athletic facilities, the big one that really jumped out was the indoor fitness and exercise facility, well above everything else. And you can see in this particular graph, it really does stand out over here as well. So that's something that has a lot of support from a funding perspective, and it's something that's pretty widely wanted compared to the other options that people were looking at. We looked at different types of equipment that folks might want to access, and generally, people didn't say that there was any sort of equipment access that they needed, but for those who did, bike rental and bike racks were a couple of them that came up the most. And you can see here that they came up pretty high, but again, referencing this chart, they're still fairly small percentages. Looking at engagement opportunities with nature, 54% said they would like to see more walking and biking trails. About 40% said nature preserves, nature trails. 39% said walking paths within the park. So a pretty strong signal that, that is the trails and their various manifestations that people are interested in. And when we look at this chart, you can see that almost 70% of folks who are willing to fund for their choices had the white, the walking and biking trails as something that they included on their wish list. And incidentally, number two and three, still, and 50% is right here, you've got the nature preserves and nature trails, walking paths within the park. So really, that whole cluster of that non-motorized approach is a very strong signal coming out of this data.
What do you do when people are wrong, like with interpretive signage? That is substantially important.
This is a case where, you know, the data is just one point, and it needs to be your judgment and observations and experience, so, yeah.
Your answer, sometimes we disregard.
And the law.
Just kidding. I'm teasing.
Looking at potential fitness programs, adult fitness classes and adult over 55 fitness programs, those were the two biggest findings, similar sort of thing. So you can see that that's something that people are willing to fund.
Oh, I know.
Looking at skill-building programs, again, you can see the culinary arts, the computer skills for adults over 55, and the home improvement were the big three, but again, you know, you're in the 30%, not as strong as some of the other things, not really coming over the 50% hurdle. Looking at potential social programs, most folks said that that's not something from the choices that really jumped out at them, but for those who did, social activities for adults, community special events, and multicultural events were the things that rose to the top. So again, you can see that same data plotted out along with people who are willing to fund their, their wish list.
Can we pause for a second? Greg, if we go back 10 years ago, probably one of the number-one complaints was not having programming for teens. Have we filled those voids? Do we think we've filled some of those voids?
Yeah, certainly, it's, it's, it's not rising to the top anymore, so it's not, you know, obviously, people have a need, but it's not as much of an unmet need as it was back then.
We asked about how to increase the use of programs and events. Lowering the cost was something that was mentioned by about 26%, and about 21% said safe-walking and biking routes to the venues was something, again, echoing some of that pathway kind of thing, and parking closer to the venue. And as, as I've been saying, the signals on these ones aren't quite as strong, so only 30% really for those higher things. So just to give you a sense, for those who are willing to pay for the improvements, we had the $2, the $5, the $10, or nothing. So you can see 36% weren't interested in paying anything. We combined these three to give that, that number of people who were interested in providing some form of funding, and that's 56%. We then tried to break that down to what type of funding they were willing to provide, and this is where it gets a little bit more hazy. We asked about a dedicated millage, and about 37% said that they are not at all likely to support that, and about 44% say that they are either somewhat likely or very likely to support. So that's something that you need to study a little bit more deeply. Annual fee is an option, 30%, 37% say no, but when we look at those who are somewhat or very likely to support, that's about 49% to go to some sort of annual fee structure. And we talked about a fundraising campaign to get out and build a pool of assets to cover these costs, and about 36% said no, about 45% either very likely or somewhat likely to support that approach.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm seeing not likely to support from a millage at 37, not likely to support annual fee at 37, and not likely to support a fundraising campaign at 36. Do we have any idea, do we track if anybody answered the same way for all of those questions? That'd be a curious data point.
We haven't done the analysis, but the answer in all likelihood is yes.
Yeah.
You'll have a certain cohort of folks who just don't want to fund these kind of And then you'll, you'll also find a cohort of people who are undecided, so they may have skipped these particular questions because they weren't sure one way or the other, and they didn't want to choose one side of the path.
There was also a certain number that didn't think we needed any of them anyway, so they probably weren't interested in, yeah, probably, yeah, go ahead.
People will give questions.
They do, to some extent, yeah.
On that last, it was 8% of the population on the last question did not answer, so.
The people who show up are the ones who get to make the decision, so ultimately. All right, any other questions on the leisure services?
Can we get a breakdown of the age of the folks, too?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have some questions. I'm trying to look on, I can't, I cannot get past this culinary thing. And, and I'm looking at the questionnaire, I'm looking at it here, I've got it online. Did you see the questions about culinary? I think it was question.
I think it was question like 12 or 13.
Yep, it's question 14.
14, sorry, 14.
Which, which five skill-building programs would most benefit your household? And so it's the first column, the, the fourth one down.
So we don't know anything more than that, right?
Yep, so it's something to explore further if it's something that you wanted to dive into.
Well, I know, I know, what he was, he was telling us that it might be one, you know, like it might be.
It could be anything.
Or maybe they want more.
Gourmet. We don't know.
Oh, right.
Yep, so as you go into the planning process, having those kind of conversations, say, you know, there was a fair amount of interest in this kind of thing, what would make sense to you? And then just have those conversations, have the staff have those kind of conversations, and then, and then have that be part of your planning process.
I mean, I don't know, I was just in the first line. I just wanted to get the survey.
Yep.
Nancy, I'm Jeanette Ilo, the Business Operations Coordinator. In previous surveys, what we do, and I think Eva does the same with your group, is after we get all of this data, then we dive into what things kind of stand out to us. So if we see culinary as a really popular thing, or we see that environmental sustainability is a really popular thing, then we will create like subcommittees within our organization to kind of dive in and maybe do more surveying of the public. So we see that environmental sustainability is really popular, and then we might have survey questions specific to what things related to environmental sustainability really stand out, or what things related to culinary skills or IT services for seniors over 55, and then we'll kind of dive in from there. This just gives us where to even begin, and then we can kind of learn a little bit more about what needs exist related to those specific areas.
We have that you can, it compares from five years ago, but how do you feel about culinary? That, I mean, it's, it's not a lot.
That is, that is something that we'll be looking at.
Stock market.
When we do the addition, we have, we have the libraries doing an additional analysis, and that's one of the things that they'll be taking a look at. And then some of the additional cross-tabulations where you say, okay, age of respondents in the house, or the age of the people in the household who said culinary, and our particular ethnicity, or a particular mosaic segment, or did they say they never use the library? Did they say they never go to the, you know, events that the summit hosts? So, and that is, and I, I didn't properly thank you all for letting us piggyback on your survey, but that is one of the reasons why we wanted to partner with leisure services is because we have overlaps in some of these programs. So doing the survey jointly and together allows us to, to navigate how we complement each other's offerings as opposed to competing with each other, and then we sort of divide and conquer the, the programs and services that make sense. And I, we, we talked, when we did our initial presentation draft among ourselves, about culinary in particular and where the line might be. But, I mean, from the library's perspective, the, the 600s, for those of you who don't know, that's where the culinary arts are. The 640s are very popular, we circulate a lot of cookbooks, and some of the more popular programs that we do have are about like Sister Pie, the Sister Pie cookbook, you know, the, with the author Kane. We do have a lot of those, we have a lot of those interests. So it didn't surprise me, and I think that the nuance of navigating how we meet that need is what we have to figure out.
Greg, it'd just be interesting to see five years ago, if people care about.
Yeah.
Greg, didn't you see that also when you were looking at the summit?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna, just about to mention, is interestingly, this, over the last couple of months, we've been doing a feasibility study on the summit and usage of space, and are there better usages, especially with our banquet center? And one of the things that has really come out with our community input sessions is the potential of converting our commercial kitchen into a teaching kitchen specifically for culinary programs and teaching opportunities. So this survey, kind of talking to your multiple data points, this survey kind of supports the information that we've received in that feasibility study process, so that could be something down the line that we look at doing that would be able to meet the needs to better utilize space at the summit and be supported by the need for culinary programs.
And then a broader regional school craft is a very strong program.
Yeah.
So there may be partnerships there that are potentials.
All right, let me dive into the library services section. We looked at the use of the library in the last 12 months. You can see that about 29% say that they haven't used the library in the last 12 months, and everyone else has, and some people, I think they have a, they just camp out there, so very regular, dedicated users. When we look at the particular services that were used in the last 12 months, so borrowing materials. materials continues to be the number one, followed by working with staff, asking for assistance on various questions that they have, work-study kinds of use of the space, and then use the computer or Wi-Fi. When we asked them which services are the most important to their household, the borrowing of physical materials really came out as the number one thing, followed by a quiet space for reading and studying, and the borrowing from other libraries. Those were the three most significant. And that's something, again, just diving into some of the data, there are some interesting differences. When we look at most important library services, the library programs for youth, for example, is something that when you look at the age groups in the home, people with children are much more interested in having the programs for youth. So that makes perfect sense. But there's a number of those kinds of pieces within here when you start studying that breakdown. We wanted to understand some of the barriers to increased use. And while a lot of folks said that none of these, none of these are barriers, one is that you're too busy came up. And then the other two that came up most often that were significantly less is lack of knowledge of the services that are provided by the library and the distance from their home. And again, you can dive in and look at some of the differences. For example, if you're looking at being too busy, that was something that people with younger people in the home tended to say that was an issue more so than folks who were older.
So putting that as an option on the survey, what are we supposed to do with that information? Because it seems like we'd want things that we could perhaps help out with.
So we can't do everything. And some people, when you talk to them, just say, I'm too busy. And you say, well, what could we do? They're just like, I'm just too busy to attend. And this was also, this was the same question that we asked five years ago.
Yeah.
And so that benchmarking, just to get back to what you were saying before, of saying, what was it five years ago and what is it now? I think that that's going to be, I think, positive for us to know. But, yeah, some people are just, they're too busy to come.
Right. And I don't disagree with that. It just seems like we would put things on here that we might actually be able to do something about.
They don't know, like respondents don't necessarily know how to make it better. They just know with their own personal experiences. So we try to give them options that would reflect what their own reality is. We're not asking them to solve that problem. Like, our job is to solve that problem for them. We're just saying, what's your problem? That came out wrong. But you know what I meant. So, yeah. But it is a question that we asked before, and the...
We need more interpretive sign.
When we get to the notary public, that was a repeat from last time we asked it, because we had gotten some requests for that previously, and the township has that, and so we decided not to do it. And that was one in particular, I went back and looked, and that did go down. There are fewer people in this survey that wanted notary publics.
It was a busy one, though.
Yeah, I don't remember. I don't remember offhand.
I mean, to some extent, then we can kind of say, okay, well, there's nothing we can do here.
I'd be curious if like, that number, I'm too busy, tracks with economy, unemployment, perhaps you know then, okay, if we're going into a recession, we know that a number of people are too busy or not busy, you know. I'd be curious to see what you would do with that number.
Sorry, Michael.
One thing I'm taking from this is with the need for notary services, we currently charge $5 for notary service right now. And that might be, that might be something the board wants to talk about as a barrier we remove, as opposed to, you know, providing that.
$5 discount if they come up two flights. We don't charge, or I've never charged.
Got to put a sign down in the lobby, Pat.
We are.
Notary service. Eva, do you think that, do you think that the fact that you can now borrow materials without going to the library is reflected in this? So, because you have the ability through the app to borrow, and like, so some people may not, may answer the question, I never go to the library, but still be a customer? And also, they're too busy, but they don't have to go anymore?
I am interested in, you know, the additional analysis that we're having done, because we did not define what borrow materials means, and we did not define what borrowing materials from other libraries means. We didn't say enter library loan. We didn't say, do you go to another library and use your Kent library card there? And we didn't say, are you borrowing physical materials? Are you borrowing electronic, you know, digital streaming download, downloadable material? And we did just, we actually just started a service, Cloud Library, which is e-books and e-audio books, but we belong to a larger statewide consortium where you can borrow those materials that I don't own, that you can get them from Kent District Library on the west side of the state. So if we don't own the e-audio, you can technically borrow that from another library. So we did not put any definitions on that. And after we got the results back, it was something that occurred to me and my staff as we were talking about the results. So I think that's an important nuance, and I don't know the answer right now.
Yeah. Okay, I wasn't sure if it was reflected. Thanks.
But a lot of people, too, are like, well, the library's the library. And they just think, they think Kent Library is the same as the Plymouth Library is the same as the Detroit Library. Like, we're all libraries, but it's the same, I mean, you know, with township services. They're like, well, you, can't I get this? And you're like, no, that's a completely different entity and organization.
It would be an interesting one to unpack down the road, too. So what does busy mean? What are the things that are competing for the time? And really looking at those as cost. If you look at the cross tab under the, you're too busy, you can see that the younger cohorts say that's an issue much more so than the older cohorts. So it's just something that I think could be unpacked more, to find really innovative ways to make people's lives maybe a little bit smoother by being aware of some of the things that you can provide.
Can I ask a question? So I guess with this information and this feedback, with this discussion, if you are picked again to do the survey for next year, are you going to refine the questions within the survey to be more, I guess, accurate to the discussion we're having?
I wouldn't recommend doing this.
Oh, is it every five?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, I guess for the next five years.
And I think it depends on what the needs are, and a lot of that's driven by staff and the kind of things that you're hearing from, from staff, looking at trends, what's going on in the broader industry for libraries, the conversations. I mean, all of those come together to help select the questions.
Right. I just didn't see anything like, I say downloadable streaming materials, but just, I think what I'm hearing from the group is they need more definitions surrounding this. So if you solicit that survey, right, you'll get a defined response back, and then that will, your data will be more accurate, right? I'm just, I'm thinking very linearly. So is that, is that right?
The thing that, go ahead.
Are you sure?
Sure.
Okay. We had to make a lot of choices in order to combat survey fatigue, right? And respondent dropout. And that was one of our, I will say, just for the library's part, I'm staring at Lori. That was one of our hardest, that was one of our hardest things, was trying to say, what is it we're really trying to get at? What is the broader question that we want to ask? And how do we plan on using the data? And so we went, for some of these services, we went very specific, and some of these services, we went really broad, figuring that we could drill down as part of that feedback cycle wherever we needed. So I'm, we will ask more specific questions based on these results over the next five years. And then when it comes time to do the survey again, assuming that we're invited to do it again, we will then say, okay, what is the question we want to ask now? What is it that we want to learn? And how important is it? Because some things are flash in the pan, like 10 years ago, Second Life was huge, and there are all these libraries that were joining Second Life. I don't know if you remember that. You wouldn't, see? Because no one knows what it is now. So I'm really glad we never asked that question, and we didn't go down that particular path. I mean, just as an example. So, yes, we will be refining the questions.
Okay.
Moving forward. And yes, we will be doing some, some deeper dives with focus groups and questionnaires and surveys, and program surveys, and general library surveys, and things like that.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry.
No, absolutely. And I think you're right on.
When we were putting together the survey questions, we already have a lot of data that we know specifically.
Yeah.
And so a lot of the things that we are looking at from the library's perspective are more community trends. And then it's up to us to figure out, what do we do with that information, and how do we go with it? So if you, if you ask too specific of a question, you get too specific of an answer. And it doesn't give you that opportunity to do the design thinking and the problem solving and the really understanding the need in the community. It just gives you kind of a checkbox, yes or no. And when we only do this every five years, what we're really trying to get a feel for is, what are the general trends and the general feeling in the community? And then we will use the other data that we have in the other focus groups or whatever else it is that we do, the knowledge of the librarians, our circulation statistics, we have all kinds of stuff to look into. Like, the too busy question, you can solve too busy. And like, why people say they, what their barriers are, like, that's the next step for us. We don't expect to get those specific answers necessarily from this survey. So.
No, it does help. And I mean, I think it's good that Eva said you're taking an annual look at it every year, because I think things can change within 12 months, six months, you know, like, it can change, right? But then to see that moving trend, I guess, I'm also wondering, why is it done every like five years? Like, why are we, is that, is that a nationwide?
So initially, it's because
Benchmark or something?
The certification for leisure services, the CAPRA
Oh, okay.
Accreditation. So they were doing it anyway. And so we sort of invited ourselves, and they said yes. That's why I'm like, if they, they let us continue to partner with them on the survey, it could be very useful for us. And also, just to remind you guys, I think I told you guys, the State Library, the Library of Michigan, has that Quality Services Audit Checklist, and we're currently at the enhanced level. It's essential, enhanced, and excellent. They did a revision of that, and we're still going through the levels of the certification. But a survey on a more frequent basis is required for excellent status for public libraries.
Okay.
So we would, we are potentially going to do like an interstitial survey that might be library only. Maybe I'd invite you guys. I don't know. But the... So I think that if, if the board decides, yes, we want to pursue excellent certification, that you would need to tell us that, and we would need to budget for that so that we could do the more frequent surveys. Because I think it's every two years or three years, every, every three years. So we would probably do it right in the middle between the five-year segments if we were going to continue to do that.
Well, it has to be far enough away so you're, you're seeing new information. You're not just getting the same thing over and over.
Yes. And survey fatigue is very real. And I think that's one of the positives about doing the survey jointly, is that it's one survey, but it serves the entire township and both of our, you know, departments in particular.
It does cost a lot of money. But also, interestingly, this is, I believe, the fourth time we've done a community-wide survey with our department. And some of the, the majority of the big picture items are still the same items. Trails has been the number one need every single time that we've done this. So it's not, we're not seeing drastic changes from survey to survey. We very consciously ask similar questions. We make variations to try and dive into information a little bit, a little bit deeper, maybe clarify some different things. But we try to be fairly consistent, too, so that we're not just, we can actually compare and use the prior years as benchmarks. And even doing it every five years, things stay fairly similar across the board.
Any other questions? So one of the questions that we asked was potential future services. And you can see notary came up. 39 percent would like to see that as a service at the library. Smartphone tablet device support came up as number two. And then home delivery of materials was something that came up number three, right in line with the in-library use of special equipment, so laminators and some of that kind of, those tools. And again, you've got the breakdown. Different cohorts have different levels of interest in these future services. We asked about library hours, and only 8 percent said that the current library hours do not meet their needs. So pretty strong showing there. And when we look at the breakdown, it's really pretty consistent. The largest cohort that says that we don't meet their needs, our folks, you know, with kind of intermediate residency, but no real strong things popped out. It was pretty consistent across groups.
I think the one to five-year-olds probably want to show up around 1:00 in the morning when they're up.
About every four hours, they go to the library, or at least drive by it. Preferred potential after-hours, non-staffed services, so that's something that most, well, the plurality of folks said that it is not needed. For those that are interested in some of those after-hour kind of things, holds pickup and copying, printing, scanning were the two that rose to the top. And again, the breakdown is available, and just some of the initial ones. Holds pickup in particular had some variation in study space. Looking at the library compared to the benchmarks, again, the library overall, well above the benchmarks. Hours of operations were actually a little bit below the similarly sized communities in Michigan. But again, if you go back a couple of slides, only 8 percent said the hours didn't work for them. So I would, I would not be concerned at all with that particular graph. Resources meet your needs, you're above the benchmark, and the helpfulness of staff, you've got great staff. So at a 90, it's hard to get above that. And these are just the scores of some of the other questions for the library. Hours of operation rating on a scale of 1 to 10, it's an 8.8, which is excellent. Resources meet your need, 8.7, and the helpfulness of staff, 9.1. So really strong scores. So what do you do next with all this information? And you've heard a lot from, from library and leisure services in terms of what their process is. What we generally talk about with other communities is you've done the first step, you've done the measurement to get kind of that high-level landscape. The next step is where staff will start brainstorming, you know, why did people answer the way they did? What are some things that we could do differently? And then the third step is often to do that validation and confirming where you're pulling in members of the public. You're having some of those broader conversations. You're saying, you know, here's some of the things we're thinking about. What makes the most sense? What's missing from the list? When we talk about culinary, what is culinary? What kind of things would you like to see? Here's the list of potential things. Which ones make, resonate with you the most? Looking at costs and all of those kind of things. Training, as you're looking at making these kind of improvements or adding things in, understanding, you know, what's the new skill set? What are the new tools that staff will need to have available to implement these things? And then the actual implementation process, the project plan, what's going to be done on a monthly or a quarterly basis to roll this out and make sure that these things happen. And then at some point, five years from now, or maybe two and a half years from now, you come back and measure again to see, number one, have you made progress on those areas that you wanted to make progress on? And number two, have priorities shifted? So that's, that's something that certainly happens as the demographics of the community and the economics and the political situation shifts. So that's the summary. Any other questions, comments?
First comment was, I spent an hour today with a gentleman who Mandarin is the language spoken in the home. Pretty, pretty highly favorable about the community. But his point that he made that I shared with Eva is he just got back from Hong Kong, had spent some time in Europe. And, and without any request from me, he shared that Canton Township's library is not a nationally, you know, benchmark. You guys are worldwide in terms of quality of service and delivery of service. The, the level of service that Canton Library provides is international. It's not a local benchmark. So you're doing a great job. And I think the data shows that, both in the township side and the library side, is the users are happy. Now they're making suggestions where we can make improvements. So that's how I take it. And the biggest challenge is, as you pointed out, is now staff's got to go to work for the next several months, digesting what's here and figuring out what that translates to in terms of programming and future budgets. Because library, I'm sure is identical to us, our budget's already locked in for the year. So now we're looking at, what are we going to do next year? 12 months away.
Invite your neighbors over.
I'm going to sign up for Second Life.
Second Life?
Second Life. I hear it's great.
So how are you going to, are you doing the second step, then, in terms of internal teams, and how will you decide who that is?
So for us, now that we have the data, the full cross tab, typically what we'll do is set up some, we'll have a internal staff meeting as a large group, and then break it up into smaller groups that are going to focus on particular areas and really brainstorm, do some research, and come up with solutions for that process. And then integrate any programming ideas when we can, and any larger picture things into the master plan. into the master plan when we do that process next year.
So you would define some of the items also?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, great job.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to work with the township. You've got a lot of great things going on, and so it was really a pleasure to hear from your residents and meet all of you as well. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Seeing no other board comments, questions, is there any public comments? Any public comments?
George came and left.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Okay. Seeing no public comment, those in favor, or could call for a motion to close or adjourn?
Moved.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you, guys.